Hi, everyone. Welcome to the Gostown School Board meeting. We do have two public hearings tonight that we're going to do first. The first one I called to order at 7:01. It is pursuant to RSA 198,20B-3A. The Gostown School Board will be holding a public hearing on Monday, September 13th, at 7:00 PM in the Gostown High School Library located at 27 Wallace Road, Gostown, to accept public input relative to accepting the disposition of a class account donation of over $5,000 from the Gostown High School class of 2020 to Gostown High School. A vote is scheduled to act on this subject matter at the September 13th, 2021, public hearing.
Scott.
So, we need to stand for the pledge, please.
We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, is Dan on? Scott?
Yes, he is.
Oh, hi, Dan.
Hi, Dan.
Okay, so we do have one board member who is joining us on the phone. It's Dan Kudier. Can you just say if you're here and alone?
I am here and alone.
Thank you. So, we do have public comment that is relative to the disposition of a class account donation to Gostown High School, and I see none, so we open up the public hearing. Scott, Brian?
Mr. Gross.
On this, there are two public hearings. The first one involves the monies from the class of 2020 that donated over $8,000 to be used at the discretion of Gostown High School administration. So, it's not uncommon for schools to donate surplus funds from their accounts, and that's what, this was the class that, you know, could not do a lot of things due to COVID-19, and they're, so they kept aside a decent chunk of money for their class reunion, and then the rest they're donating.
Go ahead, Alan.
They don't request to go to anything specific or anything specific?
It's at the discretion of the school.
Thank you. Anyone else have questions for Scott? Okay, so we need a motion to accept this donation.
I move we accept the donation with a thank you to the class of 2020.
Thank you, Alan. Do I have a second? By Ginny. Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'll do roll call. Retta?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Shane?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
And Heather?
Yes.
So, motion passed. So, I need a motion to adjourn this public hearing.
So moved.
By Alan. Do I have a second?
Second.
By Shane, I'll do roll call. Retta?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Shane?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
And Heather?
Yes.
We are adjourned. So, now I'm going to call the public hearing at 7:04 for the second one. That is pursuant to RSA 198,20B-3A. The Gostown School Board will be holding a public hearing on Monday, September 13th, in the Gostown High School Library to accept public input relative to accepting CRSA Act Eschers II and ARP Act Eschers III funding. A vote is scheduled to act on the subject matter at the September 13th meeting. We already did the pledge, so I'll open to public comment that's related to this hearing. Seeing none, I'll close it, and then go ahead, Scott.
Sure. You'll recall that the school district, along with all other school districts in New Hampshire, as well as across the country, received federal funding from the government, and those are called ESER II and ESER III grants. I'm going to give you those amounts. So, your ESER II grant for Gostown is $1,128,057, and ESER III is $2,508,146,000. There are some notable differences between how ESER II and ESER III grants may be spent. ESER, and there is a rather long laundry list of things in which school districts can spend them on, and essentially, it's anything basically related to COVID and/or COVID mitigation, whether that be physical plant improvements or additional staff, you know, you kind of, the one thing that unfortunately you can't do is you can't use it to pay for shortfalls in revenue for food service, which is what we've had to deal with the last couple of years. Most notably for ESER III, however, is that there is a requirement to spend a minimum of 20% of that ESER III amount, again, roughly 200, I'm sorry, $510,000 or so, on student remediation needs. So, that would include things like tutoring, addressing social, emotional learning, counseling, additional teaching staff, just trying to deal with, you know, student academic loss, and you name it. What I will share with you is that you have already approved a substantial amount of what that 20%, you know, allocation is, and I'll just go over that with you and for those in the audience. So, so far, on the technology side, you've approved software called iXL, which is an online learning platform for students, which can help them with a variety of different subjects. You've also approved to be implemented next year, a learning management system, which will allow students and parents to interact with their teachers and staff at all the different schools. And it also has a robust platform in terms of the teachers being able to post videos, their lessons, submit assignments. We've talked about that before. We have included in this grant two IT positions, who are with all of the extra hardware and with all of the, the total totality of devices now across the district. We have, we knew that we were short-staffed with IT support before, and I think, you know, there's a definite need for those two positions. Those are grant-funded. This particularly are using ESER III. You also, you also approved a dean of remediation. You approved a Bartlett Special Education teacher, as well as a Mountain View Guidance Counselor. So, those are the ones that have already been approved. When we talk about what we intend, or what the district intends to spend future ESER II and ESER III dollars, you'll recall that in looking at our CIP plan, we're looking at the potential of replacing a lot of the older windows and some doors, door sets that were a part of our CIP, and I think that's the first look, is to see what is eligible on our CIP that is also ESER-eligible, and then furthermore, are there any further, you know, educational, whether it be, it could be technology, it can be curriculum materials, it could be additional teaching staff or supplemental teaching staff. So, all of that, I guess, has yet to be vetted. We have till 2023 on ESER II to spend those funds, and then 2024 on ESER III. So, we do have a decent amount of time, and this will be an ongoing process. I should note for the public that there is a, on our website, we do have ESER, or ESER Plan, and shortly we'll be putting a link to a survey where any community member, if they have anything that they would like to see the district spend funds on, that will be another route for that. We have already had some dialogue with our facilities planning committee about ESER II, and when we regroup in October, we will also be talking to them about ESER. We have spoken to different stakeholder groups as well, but we will continue to do that, you know, going forward. That's part of the stipulations of these grants, is that you do have a continuing dialogue with key stakeholders, you know, in the community. So, Caleb, if there's anything that, from a student perspective, when you bring that back, you say, hey, the school board wants public input from students, if you get that from the student council, then please share that with either me or the board, and we would love to have that. And that's really, I think, Brian, is there anything else that I'm missing?
Nope, I think you covered it. Can you just go over the amounts one more time, Scott?
Sure. ESER II was $1,128,057, and ESER III is $2,508,146,000. And I would need a motion from the board to accept both ESER II and ESER III for plating purposes, since this is unanticipated type of funds.
Great, thank you. Does anybody have any questions? Janelle, go ahead.
I just have a quick question. Would it be okay if you put together just a little quick cheat sheet, or anything you just said about, so we can kind of look at sort of how much we're spending?
Yeah, we, I apologize because I'm, I have to disconnect, and I don't want Dan to disconnect because I think I used the wrong moderator code. But, yes, I do intend to do that because I need it myself. I have it in grants management, but I do intend to have a running tally of where we are with those grants. It's a little over $508,000, I think, that has already been allocated or budgeted.
Scott, can I turn the volume down on that?
It's all on me, and when we're done, I'm just going to mute myself.
Thank you.
Okay.
And then, when we're done, I'm going to have to disconnect and then redo it, because I put, I put the moderator code in this one, not on that one.
Okay, got you.
Jared, did you have?
No.
You're good. So, does everybody have any other questions for Scott? So, do you do, we'll do two motions then, where, is it okay to do them together?
You can do them together.
Okay.
That's fine.
All right, so I need a motion to accept the grants.
I'll make a motion to accept the ESER II and ESER III funding as presented.
Great, thank you, Jared. Do I have a second? By Terry, any other discussion before I do roll call? All right, seeing none. Retta?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Shane?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
And Heather?
Yes.
Motion passed, so I need a motion to adjourn this public hearing.
Motion to adjourn our public hearing.
By Jared, do I have a second?
Second.
By Shane, do roll call. Retta?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Shane?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
And Heather?
Yes.
Motion passed, so I need a motion to adjourn this public hearing.
Motion to adjourn our public hearing.
By Jared, do I have a second?
Second.
By Shane, do roll call. Retta?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Shane?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
And Heather?
Yes.
Motion passed, so I need a motion to adjourn this public hearing.
Motion to adjourn our public hearing.
By Jared, do I have a second?
Second.
By Shane, do roll call. Retta?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Shane?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
And Heather?
Yes.
Motion passed, so I need a motion to adjourn this public hearing.
Motion to adjourn our public hearing.
By Jared, do I have a second?
Second.
By Shane, do roll call. Retta?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Shane?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
And Heather?
Yes.
Motion passed, so I need a motion to adjourn this public hearing.
Motion to adjourn our public hearing.
By Jared, do I have a second?
Second.
By Shane, do roll call. Retta?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Shane?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
And Heather?
Yes.
Motion passed, so I need a motion to adjourn this public hearing.
Motion to adjourn our public hearing.
By Alan, do I have a second?
Second.
By Shane, do roll call. Retta?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Shane?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
And Heather?
Yes.
Motion passed, so I need a motion to adjourn this public hearing.
Motion to adjourn our public hearing.
By Jared, do I have a second?
Second.
By Shane, do roll call. Retta?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Shane?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
And Heather?
Yes.
Motion passed, so I need a motion to adjourn this public hearing.
Motion to adjourn our public hearing.
By Jared, do I have a second?
Second.
By Shane, do roll call. Retta?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Shane?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
And Heather?
Yes.
Motion passed, so I need a motion to adjourn this public hearing.
Motion to adjourn our public hearing.
By Jared, do I have a second?
Second.
By Shane, do roll call. Retta?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Shane?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
And Heather?
Yes.
Motion passed, so we're into committees. Scott?
Thank you. Tonight you have a manifest totaling $1,299,397.58. I would say that you have your typical payroll, taxes, and benefits, although noteworthy is you don't have any health insurance or retirement, so it's rather light. Your special ed activity is largely from summer, from the summer, and for those who don't know, we still provide education to students, special education students during the summer, and it's a pretty robust program for both in-district and out-of-district, so you have both in-district and out-of-district transportation needs as well. Your general expenses, the largest one is your SAU-19 assessment for September. Couple of other ones I'm just going to touch on, impact fire service, I wanted to give you an update there, so part of that was the Mountain View Middle School cistern that project is finally complete. It had some hiccups here and there, but the tank had to get drained a couple of times, but it is now operational. The setup of that tank, it being more or less a horizontal-type system, is not the most perfect one in the world, but that's how it was designed 30 years ago, and that's kind of how we've replaced it. I mean, in a better world, it would have been designed if it was vertical, but according to Randy, we're, you know, we're kind of all set there. You'll also note that we have a similar inspection for the Glen Lake cistern in the budget for this coming year, but so far, so good, and we'll get those final numbers with respect to that project, because that's being funded through the Capital Reserve Fund. Next one I wanted to let you know about was Arbiter Trust, that's $10,000. That was an out-of-sequence check, and it's my obligation as part of your policy to let you know when I issue those. Arbiter, for those who don't know, that is how we pay our athletic officials, and we fund an account, and then that company then does direct deposits for all the officials, where they get their money within typically 40, 24 to 48 hours, they like it. So, that was that one. The other one, which we're going to talk about a little bit later, is J. Chet Rogers. You'll recall that is part of the area agreement. We have to do an appraisal every five years, so you'll be discussing that tonight in non-public session, which would then, the document's going to be released into public session, but because it has implications of your area agreement and your negotiations with New Boston, it'll first be discussed in a non-public setting, and then later be released for the public. And there was nothing that was over $5,000 on the food service side, and if there's anything that you have questions on, I'll be more than happy to respond.
Go ahead, Jared.
Just, thank you, Mr. Chair. The last item, GZA, geo-environmental.
Yeah.
Has that been completed, and what are the results from that review? Are they still in process?
I don't know if I've gotten the results of that. It's an annual, it's not, I don't even know, I think it's every three years we do asbestos-type sampling in different schools. I can certainly follow up with Randy in terms of if we've gotten those reports. I don't know.
Are we, if I may follow?
Yeah, go ahead.
Are we looking at having another set of money on another manifest later on, or is this for the full, full total amount?
I believe that's it.
Okay.
So, I'll have to get back to you on what those results were, and I'll just make a note of that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jared. Anyone else have questions for Scott and the manifest?
I, there was one thing that I do know, is that we were, there was asbestos that was found, and we had to replace something in Maple Avenue School, and I know that that was something that had to get addressed, so I'll get with Randy on that, but I know that there was something at Maple with a composition of a countertop or something like that. If it's, if it's going to get removed, it's going to have to deal with, get the deal with.
It did at 7:00.
We didn't realize anybody was out there at 7:00. You can come in and sit down.
If I may follow up, Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Just go in the comments. So, could you just make sure, once you have that information for Maple, if you bring that to the facilities?
Oh, yeah.
Committee, I just appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, any other questions on the manifest? All right, so I'll need a motion to approve the manifest, please.
So moved.
By Alan. Ginny, do you have a second? All right, any other questions for Scott? Seeing none, I'll do roll call. Retta?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Shane?
Yes.
Alan?
Yes.
And Heather?
Yes.
Motion passed. Any other, you have DOE 25, Scott?
Oh, yes. It's one of my favorite things to do in this role, is to spend days filling out the state's form. Sarcasm noted. So, for those who don't know, every year, every school district in the state of New Hampshire is required to complete a very extensive financial reporting, and it lists pretty much where every dollar is spent within a school district. The state then uses the information contained in this report for a multitude of reasons. The most important reason is that the data contained in here, there's a subset of that data, which is your MS-25, and that is how, you know, it's used for tax rate setting, and that's, that's on the DRA, Department of Revenue side of things. On the Department of Education side of things, they want to be able, you determine here, like, what is your average cost per pupil, spending on special education, guidance, you name it. They want to be able to compare district to district, you know, what, what schools are spending, and then look for trends, so that when state legislatures or the Senate, when they submit bills, they're able to kind of go to this data and try to provide as much information as possible. It's also very helpful for us in the business office, and for you as a school board, to kind of look for, look for trends like that. The first couple of pages are essentially your balance sheet, and the balance sheet really talks about your financial position in terms of you have what's called a fund balance, and then, but then you also have your expenditures and your revenues, and how all of those shake out. Cheryl Pratt from Plodzick and Sanderson reviews the DOE 25 for the last three years, and she has reviewed that, she made adjustments on the balance sheet portion, which she typically does, and they were mostly with regard to how we classify what's called pooled cash, so Dan would understand this, someone who has an accounting background, I'm not sure others do, but there was, she had moved some things around in terms of our cash and our inter-fund receivables and our inter-governmental receivables, and for most people, it's like, what the heck does that mean? And I will share with you that one of the auditors in her office had it another way, and Cheryl thought it should be another way, and I defer to Cheryl, so reasonable accountants can even disagree on classification, so I don't think it's a major deal in that respect. What I should share with you is that on the bottom of page one, the one that most school districts are concerned about is what is your unassigned fund balance, because that impacts monies that are returned to taxpayers. So, this year is a large unassigned. districts are concerned about is what is your unassigned fund balance? Because that impacts monies that are returned to taxpayers. So this year, um, is it, is it large unassigned fund balance that will be used to offset taxes? And it is an amount of $3,335,486.
Can you say that number one more time, please?
And yes, they do want cents. It's crazy, but. So, that's a larger number than I anticipated. And uh, this past year, uh, and I'm going to ask Cheryl at some point, I chatted with Dan, and I think Heather, that I think it would be good when Cheryl does the audit to talk a little bit about it, um, and what's the impact of that. But you can look at last year, I hate to overuse the word perfect storm, but it kind of was. So, we budget for a normal school year, we budget for revenues that we think are going to be expected, and then we saw a lot of things happen. So, and I'll start that. I think it's important for you and the public to understand. So we budget for a normal school year, but we didn't have another, we, we thought we'd have a more, more better, but we didn't. So we had um, transportation, we underspent that by, by almost a quarter of a million dollars, because we thought we were going to run 22, 23 school buses, and we ran 17 and 18 school buses. So, right off the bat, that was one. We did not, we were unable to fill paraprofessionals, we were unable to fill some, uh, some teaching positions, where we had to pay teachers extra to do extra, you know, classes, things like that. And in, in many areas, we saw an underspend of our budget, simply because we, because of COVID. Transportation, it's obviously the most, the most obvious. So we had us, we had a good size underspend of our budget. On the flip side of it, we anticipate revenues based upon the state, based upon tuition, and then we had a lot more. Oh, let me go back a bit. In terms of underspend of the budget, you'll recall that last December, we had those SP, SRF, those grants from the state. Well, we not only took advantage of round one, but then I asked you, we took advantage of round two. We got almost $900,000 from the state with regard to these grants, and a lot of the things, if you, if you'll recall, I went back and I took monies that we had already spent, and re, and reclassified them towards the grant, so we didn't spend that out of our own budget. So um, we didn't buy the things necessarily that we didn't need per se, but we reallocated what would have been in the budget and used grant money instead, which I hope that the taxpayers would be appreciative of that. So that's one part of the underspend. On the revenue side, when you're getting CARES Act funding and all these other grants, um, you too then, uh, you have, you're going to see over-collection, you know, of revenues. So that's really what you have, um, you know, in terms of this $3.3 million. However, it's something that we have to be mindful of, um, when we're doing our budget for next year, one, uh, because it makes it super challenging. Are you planning for a COVID year, are you planning for a non-COVID year? But that being said, um, we have to be mindful of that. You don't want this fund balance, you know, keep on getting bigger and bigger. I, in my world, I, I really would implore school board, this school board and all school boards, you want to try to keep your tax rate as level as possible. You don't want these crazy dips and then spikes and back, and you want to try to do it so that you're trying to be as, as level as you can. If you know that you've got all these capital expenditures, and you have the ability, and you try to tick off some of these things, so that you don't have to then go crazy in the off-year. So um, I'll, I'll cover more of this in the, in the weeks and months to come, but I wanted to give you just a big, more or less overview of where, you know, that, why that number was like it was, and how we address it. I'm planning on having Cheryl also come in and talk about different strategies on how to do that.
Go ahead, Ginny.
Um, doesn't that underspending of the budget also make it really difficult doing the budget the next year? Because the default budget ends up being so low?
Not necessarily, no.
No?
Default budget is not, is not lower. That budget dollar might be the same, although we didn't spend it. But you are correct.
Okay.
In the sense that when, you know, and Jared knows this, we do take a look at the prior years.
Mm-hmm.
So when we looked last year, we kind of viewed the prior years as an anomaly. Now we've got almost two years of anomalies. So you'll recall that in the prior year, I'm going to give you the worst take, the worst example, is when the budget committee saw that we underspent our teacher substitute line, and then they made a reduction, and then last year, it was like 320,000, and they just made a $20,000 cut to it. So um, so it does make it challenging to look at actuals, because that's what we rely upon, but where, the actuals are COVID-related, not really what the needs of the district are, so that's the one that we have to really impress upon the budget committee to be mindful of.
Yeah. You really need to look back two years, but in fact, that's not um taking in mind, like changes that you've made to curriculum, whatever, and the number of students that you have. So you might look back two years, but that's not necessarily going to give you um a good, really true look at your school either, right?
I would agree. I, I know this is maybe overused word, but part of, a lot of it is trust. It's trust in your budget committee rep, it's trust in me, trust in this board, the budget committee, to understand, we are returning, like, a lot of money to the taxpayers here. It's not like we, we, we spent, you know, just went on a spending spree.
Willy-nilly.
So, we, we did our very best to budget appropriately, but yet, when you have all these things happen, um, that, those monies are going to be uh offset, to offset taxes. So last year, you'll recall, I think I predicted like an 80 or 90 cent increase um per thousand on the tax rate. I think we're going to come in, and again, the tax rate gets set by the Department of Revenue, but I think we're going to have a pretty flat tax rate, um, and it might even be lower than the current one. So, and that's just simply because we, you know, of that over-collection of revenues, underspend of the budget. So there has to be trust between, you know, the school board, and the budget committee, and the community to say, okay, we trust that you're going to budget for a normal year, but if you don't have that normal year, we expect that we're going to see, you know, savings, and that'll be reflected in our, in our taxes the following. So as long as that trust is still there, you know, I hope that they will look at what's the need, not necessarily what was the prior two years of actuals.
And the new budget, yeah, okay.
Does that make sense?
If I may add on a little bit.
Yeah, go ahead, Chad.
It also might help that. You know, even though they look at our actuals, so, and remember, they look at our actuals. So whether we spent $150,000 from taxpayers, and then $50,000 from grant, we expected $200,000 from taxpayers, what the budget committee will look at is, we spent $200,000. And that's what they're going to use to kind of gauge out.
Okay.
Their information. So whether we had it from a revenue source, from a grant, or it was from taxes, it's kind of a wash, because all that they're looking at is, what did we actually spend for that line item?
Okay, I just wanted to be clear that that was, okay.
Thank you, guys.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's a little complex, telling this to Shane, it, it's not easy. I mean, like, even for all of us who deal with this every day, there's a lot of moving parts. And um, the other thing that you're going to see this particular year is that there's a one-time decrease in your statewide property tax that the state legislature voted in, which I think is going to be about an 80 or 90 percent, 90 cent decrease on your statewide property tax. So hypothetically, if it was $2, I don't know what it was this past year, it'll be a $1.10. So you won't pay as much on your statewide property tax for one year. And then, in the FY '23, come November, it's going to go back up to $2 and change.
And Scott, when you say the statewide property tax.
Statewide.
You, you mean the statewide property tax that is raised locally, retained locally, and it's classified as state aid, even though it's a local property tax?
That would be a very fair characterization of that. Yeah, so it is complicated.
Ellen, did you have your hand up?
Just really quick.
Yeah, go ahead.
I had read about that um state property taxing. That does not mean we're not getting the state aid, does it?
You're still, you're still getting that, the equivalent of those dollars.
Of that, but it's because they had all that money left over.
But it's coming there, so what's happening is, is that, I'm just going to use a hypothetical number. If you were going to be raising and retaining that $1 million of state aid, um, what will happen is, the state, even though you, the state is not, we're not raising that locally, that, say, half of it, the state's giving it to us in a different means.
I just, okay.
Through adequacy, almost, like a, like a supplement to adequacy to make up for it. So, but it helps the local taxpayer for one year. But what, sometimes what happens is, people see that, they see their net tax bill kind of go down in one year, and then when it goes up, the next year, they're like, what happened? Well, people, you know, and we're going to have to put that in our voters guide, too, to let people, let folks, you know, know that. Then, when, if you were to live in New Boston, who is going through a superintendent, you're going through a revaluation, they're just announcing these revaluations, so that throws another complexity to the explanation curve ball, where, you know, your property value went up, but then it's that the tax rate then goes down, because you're still only raising the same pot of money. But people get confused, they're like, oh, now I'm going to pay all this extra money. You know, you only going to pay for what you actually voted on. And, you know, 99 times out of 100, when that uh valuation goes up, your, your, your tax rate portion goes down.
So you have us to sign these after the meeting tonight?
Yep, I'll have you sign them a, after the meeting. They've already been, there's a new process this year where um I submit them to the department, I'm sorry, to the Department of Ed, by a portal.
Okay.
The superintendent approves and signs off on it, and then you then do it almost after the fact, in terms of getting your signatures, and then I upload the signatures. So it's a little, little different process this year.
Okay, so anything else on, on that?
That was it.
That was it?
I just wanted to give you and the public just to have an overview.
So at the end of our meeting, we'll sign. All right, so are you set, Scott?
Uh, yes, I am.
Okay. So, I realized that we have some people that came in that were outside, that I'm assuming you have public comment, is that why you're all here?
Yeah.
Okay, so I apologize that usually when you come, you just come inside. So we did public comment, and I closed it, but since you're here, if everybody's okay, I will allow to reopen um and have each of you speak. So there is a clipboard at the end, if you could write your name on there. So when it's your turn, you're going to come to the mic, say your name and address clearly for the record. As a lot of you know, this is not a question and answer dialogue. We are asking for three minutes, and we are now going to set a timer. We want to give everybody time to talk, but we do need to finish and conduct business. So when the timer goes off, I'm not trying to be disrespectful by saying, just wrap it up. And the other thing is, this is a school board meeting, we expect professionalism, no clapping, screaming, snapping, cheering, yelling. Okay, so um, we can start with whomever wants to go first, just put your name, and you can go ahead and speak.
Good evening, um, my name is Nicole Bump. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, just come to, closer to the mic for people watching to hear you. Thank you, Nicole.
And I live on Monarch Ave.
Thank you, Scott. Go ahead, Nicole.
I have um two boys at Maple Ave, and I'm here to talk about masks, as you might imagine. To be honest, this is pretty much the last thing I want to be doing, because I'm just so tired. I'm sure you're all tired as well. It's been a really exhausting 18 months. But at the end of the day, I think we're all just trying to do the best that we can for our children, all the kids in our community, and I wouldn't feel confident in knowing I'd done my best for my kids if I didn't come and speak tonight. So I believe that the problem is, while we all want to do the best for our children, we're just having a little trouble agreeing on what that looks like right now. And I had a bit of an epiphany while watching my church's worship services online yesterday. The pastor was talking about wisdom, and how knowledge and information are in plentiful supply these days, but wisdom on how to find and parse and use that information for good is still rare. He gave the example of financial well-being. There's much information on how to manage your finances. It's available to most people, but many people still have trouble generating financial health. One of the reasons for that is not everyone has that wisdom to separate the good information from the bad, and then actually take action on it for positive difference. It occurred to me that's exactly what we're facing now as a school community. I know I'm unlikely to change many minds with facts and figures. There's plenty of information out there on COVID, increasing pediatric cases, long COVID symptoms impacting children, the efficacy of masks, et cetera. There's also information out there that says masks don't work, they can cause sickness, they're impacting emotional development. I'm sure you guys have heard it all. But as our school leaders, it's your job not just to find and consider all available information, it's your job to wade through it, identify that valuable knowledge versus not-so-valuable knowledge, and then use your wisdom to do what's best for our children. We all have the freedom to create and share our own opinions based on whatever information is out there. That's our freedom. But not all information is created equal, and not everyone has the wisdom to use good information well. So if you believe in a higher power, I encourage you to pray for wisdom, as the pastor encouraged us all to do this past Sunday, in doing what's best for our children right now. If you're not religious, I encourage you to take a look in your heart and ask yourself if you're using your wisdom to inform these policies for our kids, or if you're just using information. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole, I appreciate it. Who's next? Go ahead.
Nancy McDonald on Person Road. I'm sorry, when we was here, two weeks ago, somebody came out and caught us when we were standing outside, so.
That's okay, I, I think we're a non-public.
Yeah, we had, we had a non-public session at the beginning of that meeting, so.
So.
I'm sorry, we, we apologize that we didn't.
There's three people walk by, you came in after us, after we were still out there, and you walked past us a couple of times. But anyhow. Um, I hadn't intended on saying anything tonight, but. I got a, um, I get a daily email, um, WMUR, tracking COVID-19. And today's headline says, proportion of cases in children rises. Says the last, um, COVID-19 cases have been rising in New Hampshire since they reached a relative low point in June, and increasingly, more new cases are occurring in young people. The last time active cases were rising, and as high as they are now, in late March and early April, about 18.3% of new cases were in children younger than 18. On Friday, this past Friday, September 10th, children made up 23.1% of new cases. So almost a quarter of all the new cases in New Hampshire are in children under the age of 19, I think 19 they use. To me, that's unacceptable, you know? And obviously, the increase is, I'm not reading from here, obviously, right now, is because of no mask mandates in a lot of the schools. Back to their email, over the entire course of the pandemic, about 18.6% of cases have been in people 19 or younger. Department of Health and Human Services uses a 0 to 19 age range for its summaries, while giving numbers for those younger than 18 in its daily reports. The shift reflects what's been seen nationwide, with a large proportion of cases being seen in younger people. One reason could be that children are increasingly going back to classrooms, where it'd be easier to spread the virus, but another related factor could be increasing testing in children, which could be catching milder asymptomatic cases, but that wouldn't have been detected before. While research is still being done, at this point, it doesn't look like the Delta variant is more severe than other variants, but it does spread more easily. That means that a child who gets the Delta variant isn't more likely to develop a severe case or require hospitalization than if they caught a different variant. But because Delta spreads more easily, more children may get infected, particularly because younger children cannot yet get vaccinated. More infections mean it's likelier that particularly vulnerable people could catch the virus. The overall advice has never changed. Take precautions, such as wearing masks and avoiding large gatherings, especially indoors, and if you're eligible, get vaccinated. So that's the email I got today, coming right from them. So I just want to continue saying, I think kids should be, I think everybody in a school setting should be wearing a mask, and on the buses, which I've been hearing from parents left and right, that kids are not wearing them on buses, and it's not being enforced that kids are not wearing them on buses and it's not being enforced by the bus drivers as it's supposed to be. And I'm not happy with that. My grandson's class, half of the kids are wearing masks. The teacher is wearing a mask.
Nancy, the three-minute timer went up. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Just wrap it up, please.
So I'll leave this with Denise.
Thank you, Nancy. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak? No, you ladies are all set? Okay, well, thank you guys for coming out. We do appreciate you coming and talking to us and taking the time. So if there's no other public comment, then I am going to close it again. All right, thank you. All right, so moving back to our subcommittee's budget committee.
Just tell them they're welcome to stay.
Oh, yes. I'm sorry. I usually say that. You're more than welcome to stay or you can leave. It's up to you guys. Thank you, Jared. And it's your turn, budget committee.
Yay, budget committee. Meeting is scheduled for next Tuesday, 9:21. I do want to state that on the
Good night.
Thank you.
Town website, this is being listed as a joint meeting with the school board being held at 27 Wallace Road. So I'm asking the administration to reach out to probably change the town calendar because I'm not aware that we're having a joint school board meeting with the budget committee next week.
They're coming here in October, correct?
Yeah, October.
But they are listing it, and I actually just pulled it up on my phone to ensure.
It's not a joint meeting, but
It's listed as a joint meeting.
I understand it's listed. I'll get with Danielle, but they will be meeting.
They're meeting here, right, Scott?
Every budget committee meeting will be here at the high school.
Okay. So that's the difference. But it does, it does say it's a joint meeting with the school board.
But we're not here. They are. And you are.
Well, yeah. We probably want to have them change it to not a joint meeting.
Exactly.
Danielle's school board.
The other statement I want to make, and this is actually a question I want to pose to people. I do want to start providing some additional detail to the budget committee to get us ready for the budget season. I was going to mention to them that we are in a contract year with the GEA. So I was just going to let them know that, of course, negotiations are ongoing. I just wanted to make sure that everybody was okay with me saying that to the budget committee. And the next one is, Scott listed out kind of the Esther grants that we have already spent money on for remediation. I'd also like to share that information with the budget committee. Again, I'm just looking for a consensus to make sure that everybody's okay with that.
Do you want a list of what we've approved already that Scott gave us?
Scott kind of wrote it, I jotted it down, but if Scott can provide a detailed listing with the dollar amounts, I think it would be helpful.
I'm okay. Is everybody okay with that? I see nods ahead. Yeah.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we start providing them that level of information to
Absolutely.
hopefully grease the wheels, if you will, for our budget season coming up.
Right, good idea. Thank you, Jared. Anything else for Jared?
Nope, good to go. Thank you.
All right, PNC, Rheta.
Yes, PNC met and we went over a lot of the topics that we discussed at the retreat. You know, mainly around the communication. So I really appreciate the updates on the budget and the, the DOE 25. I think this is part of what we're talking about. How do we inform the public? You know, so I think the more that we can help the public to understand during the meeting or during the budget meetings is really helpful because it's not just we're going to put one thing out. So we did, we did talk about a number of things that, that we could possibly do as we did in the retreat. And one of the things that, you know, as you mentioned, we have the teacher contract and the area agreement coming up. And I think, you know, it's too soon to do anything with the teacher contract. And obviously, we present that. With the area agreement, New Boston will be doing kind of a public outreach, letting them know about that, which makes a lot of sense. But I just wanted to, Terry and I wanted to bring it to this committee to see if we want to do anything at this end, you know, to bring it to the public.
Like, oh, go ahead, Ellen.
I remember we got a copy of the area agreement that, at one point, I think it was showing the changes that was proposed by New Boston, I think. But I don't recall if we got one that showed where we are now with what we proposed and they proposed.
We're still discussing that in non-public.
Oh, okay, because I'm like, okay, where are we and what is going forward?
Yeah, I'll, we have, yeah, we'll talk more about that later tonight.
Okay, thank you.
So what kind of ideas were you thinking for area?
We actually didn't have any ideas, but we did want to bring it to the full board to see if anyone thought that that was anything we want to pursue. And maybe it's too soon until we find out what, yeah.
Anybody for Rheta? Go ahead.
For me, Rheta, did your committee discuss possibility of us, the board?
Well, I don't know if she's done yet.
No, 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 I'm not done. That was just one. And a couple items I know that you'll be interested in.
Does anybody have any input for area yet? We're going to wait to see what we hear. Okay.
Okay, the work plan, we went over the work plan, the typical items that we work on as a committee every year. And the one that will be upcoming is the, the two awards that we give out in December, or we vote on in December. So it's not too soon, if any of you are aware of, or other people in the public of people they might want to nominate for the cornerstone and the other, I've got the name of the other award, cornerstone and the dream.
Dreamkeeper.
Dreamkeeper. So those two will be meeting in November to talk about those. The other thing that we did bring up in, in our retreat was the mission statement. And does our board have a mission statement? And Denise was so kind as to dig up some old minutes from 2017 where the committee was actually going to bring it to the board and AD, the policy AD, which states that we will review and agree upon it each year. So we, we don't have a current mission statement and we thought that the PNC could work on getting a draft, looking at what's already out there and bring it back to this committee and then, you know, address, update the policy. So we just wanted to bring that update. And if anyone else wants to be involved in that process, you're happy, you're more than welcome to join us, but we thought we'd get a rough draft out to you first. The next item that we did talk about is the pumpkin regatta. And Ellen has brought to our attention that this is, that the schools have participated in the pumpkin regatta. Different schools, different superintendents. Although Brian has removed his name from that list, but.
Mostly due to size.
Yes.
Ideologically, I'm all in. However, I think someone with a little less girth than myself would be better suited in the pumpkin.
For the record, Brian, I was in one, just for the record. I defied the laws of physics, but.
So Scott, you're saying that
So he's going to do it for the school board.
So Scott, you're saying you're capable, you have history, and you've already successfully done this. I mean, that's
I'm just pointing out that some of my size is capable. Or lower.
Yes, yes. Well, we should also ask him if he won. Did you win?
No, I think I came in like last or second to last. And it was snowing on that one, so.
So, so
Snowing.
Ellen has shared information about the, about the regatta. But if this is something that our board would be interested and there's somebody on the board that might be willing to, to, to sit in that boat and race, that now would be a good time because we do have to fill out an application. Yes, any representative on the board, even student representatives, might consider.
It's always better tradition, hasn't it?
There's nothing that Caleb Hagner can't do. That I can say with complete confidence.
So you would need an answer now because we have, if somebody on the board is interested, you can fill out the stats.
If I may, there is a $300 fee because the pumpkins get purchased. Okay, and that's what they cost. And it's a little more, whoever's going to do it, representing the school board, you decorate it based on the theme, which this year is back to the future.
Right.
Okay. And then there'll be a location where we carve it out and make it into a boat and put it in the water and we get to have fun watching you paddle down the, in Mill Pond. So I was wondering if the school board would like to do that and be represented in that big event?
Now, if somebody did, what does that mean for Mount View?
Mount View can do it. They represent Mount View.
They could still have other schools represent.
Absolutely. All our schools can do it. And there are boats available.
Okay, so does anybody want to be a representative in the pumpkin regatta this year?
Are you asking who wants to be in the pumpkin or who they want to actually do that?
Well, I think that you need a few people, right? Because you need, it's like an all-day thing Saturday to carve and decorate. And then one of you gets in the pumpkin and
On Sunday.
On Sunday afternoon, it goes down. So how about everybody think about it and email me within the next couple of days? Or email Ellen or both of us or
Yeah, and if someone would like more detailed information, contact our director, the Main Street Director. She's got it all. She'd be easy to reach than the
So if you want to copy everybody so that superintendent knows, Rheta, everybody knows if anybody wants to. So what's today, Monday? So how about by Wednesday? Does that give everybody enough time to kind of think about it? And if we don't hear from anybody Wednesday, then
I'll be the paddler.
Okay.
That's the, that's the mission critical role right there.
That's right.
That's the role.
So you'll go in the pumpkin?
So, so, yeah, so it's volunteered, so let it be done. Do we need to take a motion or anything for that expenditure from the board or anything? How does, I don't know.
No, I think if, if the board is in support of this, we'll just have the business office process the.
So does somebody, so do you need one or two people helping Caleb decorate or Caleb, you get some of your friends?
It would be great if the school
We have like a, we have a full senior student council this year, which is rare. We actually have like an extra, we have me, so we have 11 people, which is a lot of seniors.
Is that one?
Okay, so you don't have
That would be fantastic.
And as he gets the details.
So he's got people. All right, so are you good with everything you need?
Fantastic. Love it. We will be, we will be cheering for you.
Oh, my gosh.
Yes, we'll be there on the bridge yelling.
Yeah, well, people are starting to get pretty excited about it.
Yeah, because it wasn't here last year, so.
And we didn't get to do it last year as a community. To see Gulf Sound School Board have a flag and a pumpkin or whatever.
Right. Well, thank you for bringing that forward. Thank you for talking about it. Is there anything else on your list?
Just one last thing that was brought up a couple of times was the three things. And we did discuss this a little bit. It was a really great opportunity for us to put out a video after that, that gave like a 30-second synopsis of what happened at the school board. This was heavily dependent on a person that's no longer in GTV right now. But we are exploring that because I think we all agree that it was a really good thing to do. But it wasn't just a simple, simple production.
And all that that went into it was.
So you're looking into it?
So we're looking into other opportunities to do that and, you know, finding that creative talent.
All right, awesome.
That's where we're at.
All right, well, thank you. You guys had a busy night. All right, CIP, Ellen, do you have anything to report out?
Uh, just that we, by the end of this month, I don't think it's next week. I think it's the week after we're reporting, CIP committees reporting to the planning board. And the board will, the planning board will take it from there, hopefully accepting the CIP's recommendation. Of the, everybody's proposal.
Perfect. Stipend Committee, Ginny.
We are going to be rolling out the stipend committee very soon. We have the committee together and are going to be formulating a schedule.
I can actually provide a little more context because I did speak with Principal Kohler about this. So they had a number of action items that the committee worked on and they actually got quite a bit done. Wendy was looking to have the meeting, to have the committee reconvene, looking at potentially the week of September 27th. So you can expect to hear from Mrs. Kohler on that. And she's got a whole kind of plan of the items that they're still working on. She's got quite a bit of information she's pulled together, so I think more to come. And certainly, we recognize that stipends are part of the contract negotiations. So that's kind of interwoven with the teacher contract. But the board will recall, there's been a number of, I would say, positive movement forward over the last, I think, maybe six months or so, Scott, that we had two different allocations of money that have now been spoken for, for stipends. And that was a pretty significant accomplishment and it was the better part of $30,000. So it was, I think there has been good work done. There's still some more work to do. And the committee will reconvene at the end of September.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Brian. Thank you, Ginny.
Thank you.
Policy Review Committee, we have a meeting on September 20th at 5:30 at the SAU building. CNE, that's you again.
Yes, CNE, we have formulated our agenda for our next meeting, which is on next Monday, the 20th, at 7:00 PM at the SAU. And we will be going over, we'll be confirming our work plan. We'll be reviewing any Gulf Sound High School new course proposals that may be coming forward. We are going to be uphearing any of the summer professional development that has gone on, updated about that. We're also going to have updates about the IXL, updates and status on the implementation of that, which will be happening this year. Update on the 2021, 22 professional development plan for the learning management system implementation. Info on the train, the trainer model. Update on the know and tell training model, which is required by law. Online registration enrollment process, remediation and acceleration tutoring program, and the 2122 assessment process planning. So there'll be all kinds of interesting things that we'll learn about what's going on and what has been done, kind of what we always do at the beginning of the year.
Big meeting. Thank you, Ginny.
You're welcome.
Facilities Plan and Committee, Jared.
We have not met and we have no immediate schedule to meet. We are still waiting for the demographic survey to come back before we call our next meeting.
Let's take out some time. All right, thank you, Jared. SAU 19 Joint Area Subcommittee, we're anticipating a meeting late September, October, right? We don't know yet.
I believe so. I think that's fair.
So more to come on that. Superintendent, report.
Thank you. Just a few updates for tonight. If you haven't heard, I had shared with the board that we had a resignation from one of our state reps. The select board has decided not to have a special election, so that will not be happening. I, again, would like to express my appreciation to the select board. That would have impacted us because they would have been having the voting, obviously, in two of our schools, which would have been a challenge for us. So thank you to the select board. Ginny already spoke about the co-curricular stipend. I wanted to let the board know that we sent the teacher rep information out last week and encouraged interested teachers to contact Mrs. Moran. So far, we've only had one interested high school teacher who has contacted Mrs. Moran. But hopefully, we'll, we'll see some interest from the elementary and middle school levels as well. I think I've mentioned this already, but if I hadn't, I just wanted to, again, remind people that we participated in something called the 603 Bright Horizons Survey. And for special education, it's called Indicator 8 Survey. Not to give too much detail on this, but the, the state has been doing this Indicator 8 Special Education Survey for a long time. There are, every state in the United States has a state performance plan and there are these 20 indicators that special education is evaluated. All states, all school districts, same 20 indicators. Some of them are compliance, some of them are performance-related. This happens to be Indicator 8. So we're going through and evaluating that survey data. The board has heard me talk about busing challenges, so this should surprise no one. But we felt it for the first time in high school athletics last week. I feel really badly. I think it was a rescheduled meet, but the cross-country team, we were not able to get a bus. So I felt
It was, I'm only crossing the team, it was originally planned for Wednesday, but it moved to a day we can't get a bus.
Right, it was, it was a date, all I heard is it was a date change. And as a result of the date change, we couldn't get the kids there. And I, I feel badly, but in all likelihood, I'm surprised we don't have more of this. And speaking of buses, the last, today was the first morning I didn't have to do it since school started. But I have been notifying parents of late buses because we have to double up runs. So what's been happening is I have custom lists that I can send notification only to the riders on that bus. So we didn't have that set up for the first, I think, day of school, but it was set up afterwards. So now in the morning, if I have a late bus or I have a challenge, I'm notifying just the ridership of that bus. And it would be anyone who would be eligible to ride on that bus. So if someone drives their kids, they may get that notification from me because they live on live on that street, or they live in that neighborhood. And again, the Truck Center is doing the absolute best they can. I, again, remain grateful that they're making it work, but the challenges are, are really extensive.
Brian?
Yes, go ahead, Ginny.
While you're on buses, I'm sorry for interrupting, but would you look into the ladies' comments about, um, the mask mandates not being followed on the bus?
Yeah, that, so I, I will tell you, that surprised me. I've had one parent, one parent so far this year contacted me and said that there was an issue wearing masks on the bus. That day, I had the middle school principal and the dean of students on that bus, speaking to every kid, and then when that bus went to Maple Ave, I had Mrs. Pischka go on and do the exact same thing. So if, if anyone has, um, any kind of a conception that I'm not enforcing mask mandates on the bus, that, that couldn't be farther from the truth.
Okay.
Um, so I had not heard that before. We will follow up. It's a hard job to drive a bus to focus on safety.
Yeah, exactly.
And keep your eye on 60 kids. So, you know, um, I don't know what they're speaking about, but I will tell you, we have cameras on every single bus, multiple cameras on every bus. If there's an issue about masks, we will address it, and if kids aren't wearing masks, they're not going to be allowed to ride the bus. So I, I was troubled to hear that, but, um, I had only had one person contact me, and we pounced on it.
Okay. Oh, Jared, go ahead.
Just as a follow-up comment on, on what Superintendent Balki has said, I have been behind the buses at pickup and drop-off at Maple. As most of you parents know, the disaster of that experience is, all those kids are coming off the bus with masks, I've seen.
Yeah.
That's good. Hang on one second, Janelle, I'm gonna go to Ellen, thank you, Jared.
Um, I don't know, I think I emailed Heather and Brian.
And Scott, yeah.
Oh, okay. I don't know if it would help, but should we be considering if it would help encourage people to be bus drivers? And this, I was speaking to someone who has been a bus driver here in Goffstown in the past, um, and she suggested that it's very possible that having bus monitors on the buses, I know it's, and Scott did a quick run-through of cost, it's, it's not inexpensive. But, as somebody just said, driving safely and watching the behaviors and what's going on behind the bus driver is not easy. And from what I understand, it's kids' behaviors that are, make people not really want to be driving them around, is what I understand. I don't know if, if it would be worth us looking into doing something like that to encourage us getting bus drivers, so that we're not canceling events and, and having these issues with calls in the morning and stuff.
Right.
Doubling up. I know it's expensive, it was several hundred thousand dollars, I think.
Yeah.
For us whole school year.
Yeah.
But, and if it would help with the, um, assuring masks, or monitoring the behaviors.
Right.
On the bus.
Well, I think we would need to do it as an agenda item at a school board meeting, get information, and, and really, because I don't.
If we could do that.
I don't know who would do the hiring, if it's the bus company, if it's us, we can't pull staff to be on the bus.
Well, and then we have to work with, you know, the bus company, if we wanted to have monitors, you know, I don't know how it works.
Do that.
We, we can. I, I would say, my, my short answer is, I appreciate the idea, but we can't hire monitors either. So, you know, you're, it's, unfortunately, we're doubling down on a process that we can't seem to get ourselves out of. So we can't find drivers, we can't find custodians, we can't find paraprofessionals, we can't find many of our, um, support staff positions as it is. So I, I would say, in addition to the, I think, 300 and something thousand dollars that Scott costed it out at, you know, again, we're, I recognize that the intent would be to provide support to the driver, but I'm just not convinced that we can't find drivers, I don't have any confidence that we'd be able to find monitors. And, and it is expensive.
Yeah.
You know, but, but, uh, it is a hard job to drive a bus.
Maybe get some numbers and just have a brief conversation as an agenda item in the future.
Okay, we'll do.
If that's possible, thank you.
Pick up some, you know, maybe some research, the bus company would know if that's helpful.
Right, okay.
You know, I, I, just a thought.
No, it's definitely a good thought.
And since it came to me from an ex-bus driver.
Right.
I thought.
Yeah, they have a lot to think of.
It kind of makes sense.
Yeah, they do.
If they can find them.
Right. Janelle, go ahead, you had your hand up.
Um, I just had a comment, uh, my kids forgot to bring, didn't have a mask, whatever, and I said, oh, the bus drivers have masks, and they don't.
Really?
So that might help.
Okay, that's new to us. We, we, we've got thousands and thousands and thousands of masks. We've gotten free masks from the state, so we'll, Scott, would you follow up with them? That every, every bus should have a box of masks, because invariably, sometimes children forget things.
Or they drop in a puddle of rock.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, well, that's, that's a very, very reasonable ask.
Thank you. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, continuing on, just a few more things. Uh, we sent out notification today, I wanted to let the board know, of a new trend that we have been seeing on TikTok. Everyone familiar with the TikTok?
Yeah.
Um, Ellen's putting her hands up. It is a social media platform that, uh, has been around for a couple of years now, that's very popular. And unfortunately, right now, there is a, um, activity going on that involves students stealing things from schools and videotaping it. This should seem, should seem like a, kind of a no-brainer, um, but we had to notify people today, asking people to talk to their kids. We've had some, a few instances, we actually caught some kids doing this, so, um, troubling. And, uh, the last thing we need to be doing is spending our time chasing after things that we don't need to chase after. So I wanted you to know that this was happening, and we notified parents. With respect to the area agreement, um, I can report to you that you should be receiving a response from the New Boston Board, um, I would think shortly. So, uh, they have some work that they're ready to present to you. And, um, last week, the president announced some requirements around mandatory vaccines, et cetera. First glance, we don't believe that public education is going to be subject to those announcements, but the, the longer answer is, we're not sure. So, um, at the state level, we're looking for some guidance and some, some information. We had a state-level superintendent's meeting last, uh, Friday, and Commissioner Edelblue said that they're trying to figure it out, just like the rest of us. So I think more to come with respect to that, but that's something that we're watching closely. And, uh, our testing program, I'd sent out a survey, the window closes on this Wednesday, so I'm not, I, I want to wait till the window's closed, but we had a really strong response. I, I've been very pleased. We had over 1,600, um, people respond. I think that we have sufficient interest to move forward, so I was a little nervous about this, um, but I think it's going to happen. So I talked to Terry a little bit about it, um, earlier, and, uh, we'll have some more information forthcoming, but at this point, it looks like we have enough interest to have, I, I think, a, a good, meaningful program. And the board will recall, I kind of pitched three different, um, avenues. One is sort of that pool testing asymptomatic, you know, you're walking around, you have COVID, nobody knows it. Number two is if you've been exposed, that we would potentially have the ability to test for any kids who are exposed. And then the third prong would be symptomatic testing. So, um, I don't want to encourage anyone to send kids to school when they're sick, so keep your kids home, please, but if there's a kid in school that looks symptomatic, to have the ability to test that kid so that the parent doesn't have to leave work, come get them, schedule the appointment, um, pay for the test, et cetera, so we're trying to take care of that and make that easier. So more to come, but I, I was really, um, pleased with our response. So the COVID numbers as of today, the state is, uh, reporting 357 per 100,000 cases. The county is slightly lower, at 337 per 100,000. Goffstown is lower still, 44 active cases, which is a case count of 243 per 100,000, and New Boston is lower still at eight cases for 138 per 100,000, um, cases. We, as everyone knows, we have all of our data on the website. We had a number of cases that had come into us that we were notified of before school started, so we, we have those on our spreadsheet. We're not counting them as cases this year, so so far, we've, we've had 18. And thus far, we have not seen any evidence of school-based spread or school-based transmission. So, um, I have targeted masked a number of classrooms, um, and actually, on the website, I, I had MC create, um, a column that every event, I'm showing what the targeted masking correlated to that particular case is. So, for example, a positive case in a classroom at Bartlett, that classroom may be masked. Positive case at Glen Lake, same thing. The middle school, I had once, one case that involved the sixth grade team, I masked the whole team. So three classrooms of kids who were all, um, mixing. So, so far, it's gone, um, it's gone well, again, with all things COVID, and, and again, I appreciate the people that came and gave public comment. I recognize that, um, this is a complicated, um, highly emotional discussion for a lot of people. So we will continue to look at the cases. This board has also heard me say that the state has three columns, minimal, moderate, and significant spread. Minimal is zero to 50, moderate is 50 to 99, and significant is anything over 100. And I have long struggled with this, because there's a big difference between 100 and 500 or 800, but it's all lumped together. So right now, um, I'm comfortable continuing where we are. If and when we start to see school-based spread, we'll need to have further conversations about that. So, um, I would encourage everyone to, you know, continue to, um, to read, to listen, to learn more information. I think we're all, um, you know, hearing information and, and hopefully, uh, new statistics that help guide decisions, but thus far, I think we've been successful, and, um, I'm comfortable with the current state of things in Goffstown.
So, Janelle, and then Shane, go ahead, Janelle.
I have a question about the items around targeted masking, how long, are we masking those kids?
Uh, it's 14 days, so, and that, that number comes from DHHS, so we didn't make that number up. So when I've masked, um, classrooms, I did it for 14 days.
Weekdays, school days, or?
No, we, weekends, weekends count, so it ends up being.
Just two weeks.
Like a week, yeah, like a week and a half, or, or two school, you know, weeks, depending on when it falls. And then that's lifted. And parents have been, um, parents have been great.
Good.
I've appreciated that, you know, parents understand what we're doing, they understand the model, and, um, we've had good support.
Awesome, thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Shane, go ahead.
I think I know the answer to this question, um, because it sounds like we're following up, but we are contact tracing, correct?
We are, so we're, we're not, we're not required to.
Right, some districts aren't.
Well, we, we are.
Which seems like that in practice.
Yeah, we, we 100% are, because minimally, you know, and particularly, once we get the testing program up and running, you can't identify who potentially needs to be tested unless you identify who the close contacts are. Um, so right now, the contact tracing doesn't look like it did last year. Remember, the only quarantine that we're seeing is for household contacts. So as I sit here, and Mrs. Traipaz is next to me, we're within six feet, of course, she and I are both vaccinated, so that changes things, but if we weren't, um, if I'm positive, she wouldn't have to quarantine, even though she's been in close proximity, only household contacts. So we're not quarantining any students this year, which is good. You know, I think about how many hundreds of kids we put out last year because they were close contacts. We never saw any evidence of school-based spread, we didn't have any school-based spread in Goffstown last year, so all those close contacts, um, it was what we were required to do at the time, and it was, you know, probably a little more cautious than it needed to be, but obviously, I want kids in school, I don't want kids having to be home, um, so right now, the quarantine remains just household. Anecdotally, um, what we have heard with the cases we've had thus far, the 18 that we've had, it's looking, um, we have had, um, we have heard about some folks who are vaccinated and becoming positive, so that seems to be, I think, a little bit of an increasing trend. I think we're going to see more of that as we continue to hear kind of that eight months or so protection that the, um, vaccines give you. We're right, you know, we're going to be kind of up against that. We did our school clinic, the first one, in March, so, you know, eight months is right around the corner. But what we have seen is positive parents, positive kids, all within the household, anecdotally has what we've continued to hear. I have not, um, and I, I haven't heard from the nurses about this, but I haven't heard any kind of surprise cases, it's all kind of been within the household, that's been what we've been experiencing this year.
Go ahead, Shane.
Yeah.
Uh, thank you. Um, have you heard from our school nurses, as far as the contact tracing, it's been very taxing on them? I know we don't have a lot of cases, but I know that.
We're, yeah, what, what's different with the contact tracing is, last year, we had to submit a list of all the contacts, and we had to upload that into a portal, um, so there was all this, you know, responsibility, and I remember MC and I sitting there and going through Power School, and pulling names, and then addresses, and, I mean, just, just to compile, and, and she did the majority of it. I only helped when the numbers got really high and just trying to pinch-hit with her. But, um, so we're not doing all of that, but what we want to know is, who was the kid in proximity with, and, um, and also, you know, there could be unique circumstances, that could be an immune-compromised student or something of that nature, and we would want to let them know.
Great, thank you.
So, yeah, we're, we're not, and we're not going to stop doing that. So, you know, minimally, we need to identify, um, because the targeted masking is based on who the contacts are. So it's, it's all connected. And for targeted masking, um, high school cases, I thus far have only targeted masked one group at the high school, um, and particularly because all of the students in this building are eligible for the vaccine, um, I have been less aggressive with targeted masking here at the high school, more aggressive with the younger kids.
Ginny, go ahead.
Have you gotten any feedback at all regarding, like, um, students that want to wear masks and them feeling comfortable about, um, wearing masks at school?
I heard from a couple of parents about that, um, and we've tried to intervene and, and talk to kids and say, you know, are kids teasing you? I, I, that's not my experience. I have seen, I've, you know, been to all the schools, I'd say the percentage, um, of mask wearers, it varies by level, and it varies by classroom, but I, I don't think anything of it. We have, um, teachers, we have administrators, some people, you know, in the SAU are wearing masks. I, if I'm with somebody who's wearing a mask, I don't really care, I'm not going to ask them, why are you wearing a mask, or.
Yeah, okay.
You know, and from a culture perspective, you know, we need to make sure that there is no teasing, there's no, um, negative comments of any kind, I just won't have it, won't have it.
Okay.
So, and, and the kids are great, um, I'm not as concerned about the kids.
I know, that's.
The kids don't make me nervous on this.
I read social media, and I, that's where my question comes from.
Yeah, and, um, I don't read social media, and that is, um, something that is likely better for my blood pressure, um, but, you know, so anyone who ever has any comments about us, or about me, or anything else, just always know that I will never see it.
I just do kind of like know what the tone is and what people in the community are thinking, but, yeah, sometimes I wish they didn't do, yeah.
So just one quick question, not to prolong this.
Please.
So with the contact tracing, the state doesn't let you know anymore, so a parent would have to call you, tell you they have a child.
So that's.
And then who's that team of, like, how does that process work?
That all comes through the nurses and the building administrators. So, um, parents contacting us, parents have been awesome, parents have done.
But the state doesn't tell you.
Well. I, one, one of my colleagues, um, a superintendent in another town, has made a number of very bold statements about this.
Yes.
I, I have found that we have had good support from DHHS. So when, when we've had questions, or we've had circumstances, they have been responsive to me, they've been responsive to us, they return our calls, they answer our questions. So, um, I don't have anything negative to say. Their numbers, we know that the numbers on the dashboards, I hope they're accurate, our data isn't, which is why we have our own dashboard.
Right.
So, um, that's a little troubling to me, um, that's why I'm not putting an awful lot of credence in looking at the current cases in New Hampshire schools, because I know a lot of them don't make it on the dashboard. But I would say, our parents have notified us, they've been terrific about that, and, uh, we do get notified by the state as well, but this is really no different than last year. Last year, our parents would notify us when they had, um, positive cases, and that's very much appreciated.
So that's very important for them to notify you. So, that's very important for them to notify you.
It's, it's mission critical, because if we're waiting for the state to notify us.
They're behind.
They could be behind, they could have circumstances that delay that. And the, the contact tracing that they were doing last year, the state would follow up. Anyone who was a close contact, think about, I, I talked about how many hundreds of kids we quarantined last year. Every single one of those contacts, there was someone from the state issuing a daily message to those families, asking them if their symptoms have changed. It was mostly done via text messaging, but none of that, none of that's happening. None of that's happening. Everything is about household contacts, which the state has never said this, but I, I think there, there seems to be a fair amount of reasonableness that clearly the state did that for a reason. That's where they're seeing the spread happening, is my assessment, although I've never been told that. But, you know, clearly, the household contact, and anecdotally, that is what we're seeing. We're seeing, you know, mom, dad positive, positive kids, the whole family's positive. That's kind of been our, our trend.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Oh, yes, Janelle.
I just have another question. So, the, the follow-up of the targeted masking, I'm assuming that that's going good and we're not having, is that keeping the outbreak contained? Are we not having any positive cases?
We haven't had any other positive cases associated with the ones we've had. It's not to say that we couldn't tomorrow.
So far, it's like we have, have like.
This is kind of like week two. It, I promise you, it feels like longer.
It does.
Six weeks, maybe?
But so, so far, and again, I want to be cautiously optimistic that we have not seen school-based spread. So, if and when we do, that changes things, which will change how I'm looking at this and thinking about it, and will likely change the conversation at the board level. But thus far, we have not seen, and I've watched very closely, the two first cases that we had that were positive students, I asked the nurses specifically, I said, you know that I'm looking for anyone associated with these cases coming in with a positive or symptoms or anything. So, I've asked them to please contact me, and so far, we have not experienced that. Again, not to say it couldn't happen tomorrow. I know Bedford, Bedford is using a very similar model as us. They have one school that they had an outbreak at, and the definitions of outbreak and cluster have slightly changed. So, that's something I should probably update you on at some point, but there was a change in the definitions in the toolkit that the DHHS released this summer. But Bedford has one school that had an outbreak, and the whole school is wearing masks. And then, when I spoke to the superintendent last week, I think he had two schools that were experiencing some cases, and then I think the other ones, the other schools, that they felt like they were doing okay. But I, I don't know definitively whether they said they had school-based spread, but I think they certainly believed they had school-based spread. So.
Thank you, Janelle. Anyone else for Brian before we move on?
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
All right, old business, acceptance of Mountain View irrigation RFP. Go ahead, Scott.
Sure, so tonight, we have a long-awaited MVMS irrigation RFP. You'll recall that we originally put this out to bid, and we didn't get any responses. We did get responses this time, we received two responses. And before we get started, I just, for transparency for both the board and a member of the board, and I did speak to the member, one of our members, Ellen, has a financial interest in, in one of the companies. So, in speaking with Ellen and Heather, we were handling this RFP with a little bit different approach. For one, I have not done any of the analysis on the RFP. So, Randy and Laura did all of the analysis, and they have the sheet in front of you. You'll note that we specifically did not list the two companies. So, you'll see, I should say Company A and Company B. We did that for your benefit as board members, as well as one of the board members, simply because this way, there's no, no one knows who, who they are per se. Randy did provide me with a sealed envelope, and he signed off on it in terms of, so when you do make a motion to accept the bid, then we can then open it up to see what company that it was. So, so with that, are there any questions?
Ellen had her hand up, go ahead, Ellen.
I'm officially recusing myself from anything. And if the board feels more comfortable, anybody on the board feel a few more comfortable, I'll be happy to go out until you're done with your discussion and voting.
I don't think that's necessary.
Whatever you want.
But thank you. Anybody have questions for Scott? Jenny, you starting to raise your hand?
No.
Oh, okay. All right, so would we do, we would want to do hydro seeding, correct?
Yeah, so I wanted to kind of go over this with you. So, I, when we did this, because there are so many local companies, I sent out information packets to well over eight local companies, written initially, and then did the same the second round. I did field a couple of phone calls from some that basically felt that they either didn't have the time or the prices of materials are going crazy, and the labor, that they just felt that they didn't want to bid. So, you know, all the things that we keep hearing about materials and labor, it's impacting us, you know, obviously, on this one. I should also say that, you know, my, my integrity, my reputation in terms of giving you honest upfront information is very important to me. So, I, I contacted, when we set aside monies for this project, I contacted a company and asked them to take a look at it and give me a ballpark, and I even added to that. So, when I saw these numbers, I was like, wow, that's, that's a lot more money than what was originally told to me. And I just wanted to share that with you. It's not like I have any, any other intention, it's just, it is what it is. And the fact that both these companies came in relatively close, I think, is indicative of that. So, you, you'll see from the, the chart that Randy and Laura did, they, they filled out the bids slightly differently. Randy did share with me that he had to make several phone calls to both of the companies just to make crystal clear as to what was included and what was not included. So, you'll see, so, so don't be dismayed when you see mobilization for one company at 23,000 and another company at zero, because they, they just filled it out a little differently. So, when you look at mobilization of labor and materials, installation of the system itself, electrical connections, non, non-RFP type costs, and that would, this is the, the water system, and the grassmire charges us for a meter. You'll see that there is a total cost to the district of 51,000 for one vendor and 44,849 for another vendor. You'll also note that there was, they put in the options of hydro seeding, which, again, it was not specifically spelled out in the RFP, but we also asked them to put in the RFP anything that they felt might be needed. And they both returned, when Randy spoke to them, he said that they both commented on that, that you should consider hydro seeding of the disturbed areas of the trenching. So, so with that, you'll see in the middle of the page, Contractor A costs without hydro seeding and Contractor B costs without hydro seeding, there was a variance of about 6,100. And when you look at with hydro seeding, Contractor A was 54,000, and Contractor B was 49,349, a variance of 46,51. And what Randy and Dawn did was they wanted to show you what was the, the all-in total cost. So, that was with, with and without hydro seeding. And that also, they included the water line that has to get brought from the hydrant to the, to the building at MVMS, as well as the meter itself. Randy did say that when he contacted the precinct, that he was given an estimate of 1,500 to 1,800, so he put the higher amount. So, with that said, motion needed, motion to award Mountain View Middle School irrigation project to Contractor B with a project bid of 44,849. And then, for the board to award the optional hydro seeding to Contractor B for 4,500, total contracted price would be 49,349. The one thing that I should let you know is we do not have 49,349 for this project. We had earmarked only 40,000 for this irrigation project, and that's an overage. So, it is the, if it is the board's pleasure, similar to last year, if you decide that you want to still go through with this despite the fact that it's, it's over what we anticipated, we still do not have any Mountain View transportation, and that's where that overage would have to come from.
From athletics.
From athletic transportation, which we are not, which we are not doing. The other thing that I have to share with you is that legally, I can't, because this project will not happen until the summer of FY '22, process-wise, we have to release that encumbrance and then re-incumber out of, out of this year's, you know, this year's funds. So, again, in terms of your fund balance, you'd have, it would be an additional upwards of $12,000 and change to, to do that. So, I just wanted to, just for full disclosure, if you decide to proceed with it, I just want you to know that.
Anybody have questions for Scott on this? Go ahead, I was waiting for your hand to go up.
Oh, God.
But I was giving someone else a chance.
Predictable?
Scott, how much do we have for the 2022 fund balance at this point?
You said 2022?
Yeah, as I'm looking at this motion needed, motion to spend up to $60,000 for the FY '22.
Yeah.
Unassigned fund balance, how much money do we have in our unassigned fund balance?
So, there's, that's a, there's two, that, that question has two kind of components to it. So, as you know, we're returning over $3.3 million to the taxpayers. My opinion is that we're going to see a couple of things happen again in terms of transportation. I apologize, can you hold on a second?
He doesn't know yet. So, we, we have a couple of elements that will contribute to the FY '22 fund balance, but we don't really start to look at the fund balance until we get a little closer to spring. But I would say last year, that number was over 3 million. I don't know that it'll be that large again.
I don't think it'll be as robust.
But it'll, it'll probably be over, well over 2 million.
So, I'm, I can tell you with 100% certainty that I don't have any concerns about, about the use of those funds for this particular purpose. What I shared with you before about Health Trust giving us another one of those, it's going to be another 250 to $275,000, that you're going to have these funds. Do I think that it's prudent to look, I mean, I'm just looking at, trying to prepare what you asked for, for, and I'm looking at the CIP, like, all of these, those things, they've been vetted by you and the CIP and those folks. So, if you do decide to go down this road, you have your roadmap right here. I mean, it's what you've spent the last three years putting together, your window replacements and computer labs and, you know, those types of things. So, in this particular case, I do think that there is ample funds if you wanted to, to do this, knowing that you're not going to have, again, that Mountain View transportation, and you do have a, a fund balance that's not going to be an issue. Like, I can say that with 100% confidence.
Go ahead, Jared.
Knowing that CIP and things that we've listed out, we have communicating using CRM funds or ESR funds, I guess what my question is, I, I heard that this could potentially come from the middle school athletics. So, I would be more comfortable if this also included a budget transfer from one area that you know that we're going to have an excessive amount of money and transfer it over. Because to try to say something this early, and I'm sorry I'm breaking it out into a comment, but to break out this early that we're going to have an unassigned fund balance at the end of this year, I'm sure we will, I have no qualms about that. But to say that we already want to set aside some of that money for work is alarming to me, especially with the good communications and the good things that we have had with the community and, and the Budget Committee.
The reason why I'm saying, this is where it gets a little complicated. Because you're going to have to liquidate the money that you already have set aside, and you only have to technically obtain another, let's say 12, hypothetically, 12,000 and change, doing a fund transfer of transportation of 12,000 and change is not an issue. That's why I feel confident, because that money, that 40,000, that's a little more, has already been kind of earmarked, that kind of, that must get liquidated, so that's how, we already know that's fund balance. So, any encumbrance that gets liquidated goes to your fund balance. So, really, it's the only, it's the difference of, of what we have already earmarked and what is needed. That's, that's what I'm saying. And that's why I have no problem, because I already know that we have 20-something thousand in Mountain View transportation. So, I, that's why I have 100% confidence that this is not an issue.
Do you have a follow-up?
If, if that's the case, then I would just say, instead of the motion being worded this way that's being as presented, I would rather see it, say it's going to be coming from this line item going to that line item to specifically pay for this.
All right, and I can, similar to what I did, again, if the board concurs, no problems there. Similar to what I did with, when you had asked me about the teacher substitute line, which you're going to see a budget transfer now, I can give you greater specificity at your next meeting as to what fund it's coming from or transfer to satisfy that. That's not an issue, in my opinion.
Very good. Anybody, I have a clarification question, anybody else have a question? So, on here, if I'm reading this correctly, you're looking for two motions. The one motion is accepting Contractor B at the 49,349. But then, the second motion is saying we're going to spend up to 60,000, which I understand you need that contingency.
I would forego the second motion at this point and let.
Just do the first motion.
I don't think that what Jared said is unreasonable. And then, at your next meeting, I can provide you with the mechanics of how the money then has to get reserved again. I just simply can't hold monies over two fiscal years, so.
Scott, I, I want to make sure everyone's clear on this.
Yeah.
So, last year, so last fiscal year, we had hoped to do this project. So, he has an open purchase order from the fiscal year that ended on June 30th, 2021. That's open. He has to close that. So, that 40, whatever the 40 grand, say 40 for the sake of simplistic numbers, he's going to close the $40,000 purchase order. That 40,000 automatically goes into the FY '22 unassigned fund balance. That's what Jared was asking.
Automatic.
Automatic. So, you're taking the 40, you're putting it in the fund balance, and then he's going to grab it and use it again. He just can't do it across multiple fiscal years.
Right.
That's, from an accounting perspective, that's what he's trying to avoid. And then, the overage to go from 40 to the higher number is the budget transfer that Jared is asking for middle school athletic transportation.
Right, and that difference is a contingency plan. With a budget transfer and greater specificity. So, in my opinion, it would be better just to, if you're willing to proceed with this as a board, to just accept the first motion with a dollar amount, and then I'll come back to you with, with what Jared and with the superintendent just stated, just so that you have greater clarity on that.
Okay. And you came up with 60,000 just as a contingency.
I did it, this is, to be honest with you, when I was handed this in four o'clock. Randy and Laura did, so.
And that, and remember, there's also the 7,500 for the water line and the 1,800 for the meter.
Okay, so that would be added.
That will occur in this fiscal year, so that's not an issue.
All right, so, if no one else has any questions or comments, then we would need the first motion. We're going to put on hold the second motion until the next meeting.
And Scott, you said these are two local companies. This is just a recommendation for the lower bid.
Right, from Randy and Laura.
Correct, so, I, the, I can say that with, again, 100% certainty that the companies that we solicited bids from, all of them, I think I happen to know the vast majority of them. And certainly, these two, we're going to get a very good work product from. It's not an issue, that's certainly not an issue. It's just a, it's coming down to price and some slight nuances in how they bid the project.
Okay. All right, so I need a motion if we're good to move forward, go ahead, Jared.
I guess, is there a time sensitive, time sensitivity to accept this RFP?
Yeah, we typically let them know that, that we would let, you know, we give them a couple of weeks where we let them know, because they're holding, they're also holding prices, so.
So, this isn't something that, once you figure out the transfer, then it could be introduced at our next school board meeting?
I would say no, simply because when I spoke to vendors before, they actually asked me if they could buy the piping and store it in that shed, because of their worry about the volatility or the supply chain piece of it. So, that's where I'd be a little skittered, to be honest. So that's where I'd be a little skittered, to be honest.
All right. So is everybody good to make a motion to move forward? If you are, I need someone to read it.
I'll do the best I can, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to move forward with the Mountain View Middle School Irrigation Project for what's being designated as Contractor B with a price of 49,349 dollars, with the funds to be transferred at our next school board meeting.
Okay, is that it, Scott?
Yeah.
All right, so we have, thank you, Jared, so we have a second. By Shane, any other discussion?
Are we doing the hydro seating part of it, too?
Yeah, yeah, that was the, that's with the hydro seating.
Oh, just the final.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, yeah.
All right, so I'm going to do roll call. Rheta?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Janelle? Dan?
Dan is going to abstain. I, I don't have any of the paperwork.
Okay, thank you, Dan. Shane?
Yes.
Ellen is?
Abstain?
Abstain.
Recuse, not abstain.
Recuse.
Recuse myself.
And Terry?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. So we have one abstention and one recusal, but motion passed. So you want me to open this?
Yeah, because I don't even know myself, so.
Dunk dunk.
It is, but I thought this would be the fairest way of doing it. For the record, give it to the record of the company.
Yes. So where is it? So B is the second one, right? So we're going with Brian Fournier, landscaping and irrigation.
That's Company B?
That's Company B, for the record, yes. Is that correct? Am I reading that right?
Yep.
All right. Well, thank you.
Yep.
All right, so moving on to new business, budget transfers.
You should have two budget transfers, and I got to find them myself. Here we go. I'll do the first one, which is for substitutes. So you'll recall, I think it was your last meeting, and I believe, Jared, you had talked about the, the notion of transferring what could be the potential shortfall in the teacher substitute line, like where would that come from? So right now, and this is going to be addressed a little bit later on, we are falling significantly short in para, para support, as well as we know that we have some unfilled teaching positions. When we have an unfilled teaching position, depending upon where that is, we grab, other teachers pick up extra sections, et cetera, but there is, that is a stopgap measure. That's not, that's not the way we want to do it, but there are some savings in those lines. So what I am proposing is a budget transfer of $30,000 from the high school teacher line, and then $20,000 each from the Mountain View and the high school para lines. And those would all be transferred to the, the district substitute line.
Oh, sorry, go ahead, Jared.
Knowing that we have a shortage in paras, does it, is it really that, makes sense to pull from that line right now?
It does, because by the time that we fill those paras, it will be, we're essentially using subs to fill these teachers and paras, and by the time we fill them, I think we'll, I think we'll be fine. Yeah, and, and I'm also kind of going off last year's experience when I, when I'm doing this. This is where we had, this is where we had the underspend of the budget was in these lines.
All right, anyone have any questions before, so we can do one big motion just to accept the budget transfers as presented?
Yeah, you can just say budget transfer. This one would be GBT seven.
Okay. All right, anybody have any?
In the amount of 70,000.
Okay. Any questions for Scott?
Heather?
Yes, go ahead, Dan.
Is, is there just one transfer or more than one transfer? Because I don't have the paperwork.
There's going to be more, Dan. This one is though specific to the teacher substitute one. That's why I did them separately. And I also initiated them separately.
No, 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 I, is, is this particular motion for just that one 70,000 transfer?
I would, that, this is what I would be requesting, yes, it would be a, a $70,000 transfer as presented by the business administrator under GBT seven transaction.
Okay, I, I thought I understood Heather say something that we do just one motion to cover all of them.
Right, because there's two 20s and a 30, right? But they're all coming out of the same line?
You know, I'm, yeah, I'm not going to hold up the meeting, but I will abstain because I don't have them, we haven't discussed them all.
So I will, I will reiterate it again, if I may, Dan, is that this is one batch of a budget transfer, so we consider it one budget transfer that encompasses three separate budget lines. One of them is.
But it's, it's just 70,000 for the whole thing?
Correct.
Oh, okay, so it's not multiple transfers, it's one budget transfer?
Right.
But it's got multiple lines to it?
That's correct.
Sorry, I can't.
Okay, in accounting terms, that's one transaction. Okay, I'm good, thank you.
No, I was about to say, just for Dan's clarity, I don't know if he has a paper. I believe it's going to be, there's going to be other transfers that are coming up as well, Dan, so there's going to be four different motions that I believe, based on all the different transfers that want to occur. We've only talked about the first grouping.
Right, which is 70,000.
Great, super, thank you.
Can we send him that paperwork?
I don't.
No, okay. All right, so we need a motion for this budget transfer.
I'll make the motion to transfer based on GBT dash seven, what's been presented, of 70,000 dollars.
Thank you, Jared. Do I have a second? By Ellen, any further discussion? All right, seeing none, I'll do roll call.
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Shane?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. Motion passed. All right, Scott?
All right. Your, your second, I guess, iteration of budget transfers includes GBT four, GBT five, and GBT six. So the first one, which is GBT four, Dan, this is a budget transfer. All three budget transfers are a reflection of the fact that we could not hire district staff. And there were three positions that we could not staff for internally. One of them was a language model facilitator. The other one was a speech pathologist, and the last one was a ABA, Brian, it's a behavioral specialist?
BCBA.
BCBA, I'm sorry.
Board Certified Behavioral Analyst.
And so what we, what we did here was we transferred the salary and applicable benefits of all of those three positions to the contracted services line, and then we are hiring a vendor to provide those services, similar to last year. Last year I did this transfer in October, this time I know we're doing it, so we're doing it this year. By statute, I can't transfer unemployment insurance, but everything else, you name it, FICA, health insurance, dental, all of that, workers' comp, it all gets transferred, with the exception of unemployment by law, I can't. And that's what those three are for. I do not have a grand total of what they all are.
Go ahead, Jared.
Just so they understand this one, this chair, this is for us to be able to pay a vendor to provide these services.
Right.
Correct.
And my, my question would be, how many full-time employees are we giving up by moving this money? So are we saying that this is worth two, three people, and then how many vendor employees are we getting? Are we getting three, or is it less than three?
It depends, because some of these vendors, I can't speak for all of them, give you a couple of part-time people, et cetera, et cetera. I will share with you that the cost, and I'll give you a good example, the BCBA position that we are using is significantly more costly than a staff person would be. A lot more, probably to the tune of like 30 to 40,000 more. So, but what this does is this allows us to at least shore up the contracted services line. It's not going to make it whole, you know, so we're still going to have to do some more transfers, but at least it, it starts this process.
Go ahead, Jared.
I just, I, I get it, and I know that we have to do this, don't get me wrong, I guess, because I hear from our administration that contracted services provided by a vendor is more expensive unless we, you know, than we conduct it in-house. And I'm just trying to understand what kind of ratio we talking about for this example that we're providing?
It's not one to one. So if we're talking about three full-time district staff, it's probably the equivalent of two. It's, you're paying a premium. But right now, I couldn't find a speech pathologist if, if I wanted to. We, we can't find them, so.
And we're lucky to find them in good times.
And, and it's getting to the point that we're lucky to find them as a contracted service. We're lucky to find them as a vendor, because they're just so hard to find.
So if we're going to move this money to hire a service to bring someone in, do we stop looking for, and if we do then?
We would for this year, but I think.
For next year?
Absolutely, we will continue to always go out.
So this money would be moved and not set?
Yes, because I would rather hire my own person.
Do we have enough money for the whole year?
Yeah, that's, he's, he's got this, he's anticipating for the whole year.
All right. Go ahead, Janelle.
Just a quick question for Scott. Are, or anybody could answer it, are we finding our contracted services line being adequately funded for this? Because this is not something that's going away.
Um.
This is the problem that will, next year we'll have to say wrong.
When I, when I say, when you say adequately funded, we, we're going to have to do more budget transfers.
So looking forward in the budgeting process, would it be advantageous to add more money to that line?
I did, I did add based upon expected increases in these services, but not in lieu of like a BCBA. I just, I didn't do that. But what's happening is that these services are charging more anyway. So we typically have been budgeting around 400 and, I don't know, don't quote me, 415,000, I think, for this particular line. I'm pretty sure I bumped it up 50,000, because all of them have raised their rates, and so that number is just not adequate, period. And then I'm still going to have to supplant this with, with these budget transfers to make it work, and then some. But, but so far, I mean, even, just to put it in context, I don't want everybody getting nervous here, even last year, we had to do a ton of budget transfers, and we overspent that line by quite a bit. You'll see it, I think we spent close to 800 and something thousand dollars on a 415,000 budget. So we did budget transfers, then we still ended up in the red, but yet we still ended up with a surplus. So it's just, there's a lot of, there was a lot of vacancies that we had to, you know, we, it's just the nature of things, in terms of whether we teach us in paras, so we just couldn't fill them. And having people do double duties and trying to compensate them as well, it's just, it's not a good environment that we're in right now for this district and every other one.
Yeah. Another follow-up. Yeah, go ahead, Janelle.
What about the ESAR money? Is that applicable here or not?
I would say you cannot, there are certain things that you cannot like supplant for existing services, so if you're doing like extra, you can do more, but you can't pay for what?
You need these services that are out there.
You got your baseline stuff, right? And most special ed grants, like IDEA, you can't, this term is called supplant, you can't, can't spend money on things that you already had in your budget to reduce your budget.
Thank you, Janelle. Anyone else for Scott? So Scott, how do you want these motions?
On this one, you can just say that approval of Goffstown budget transfers four, five, and six as presented. And if you want greater clarity on it, it would be budget transfers for contracted services for the language model facilitator, the BCBA, and speech pathologist positions.
Could you say out loud the amounts of each one, please, so I know what I'm voting on?
I don't have totals, Dan, but I can read them, all right?
Yeah, if, if you read it, because you're transferring everything into one line, right? So just read the one line you're transferring into.
Okay. So for GBT four, salaries 49,927, health insurance 8,034, dental insurance 560, workers' compensation 34, 214, what the heck is that one? I don't know, hold on, I think that's 221, FICA, that'll be 3,00819, retirement 10,495. So that's for one of the.
Number four? Yeah.
That's for GBT four. GBT five, so it'll be salaries 39,318, health insurance 19,194, dental was 560, workers' comp 27, line 214, 115, FICA 3,008, and then line 261, I don't know what that one is, 19608. The next, that was GBT five. GBT six, salaries were 51,424, health insurance was 15,122, dental 1,667, line 213 was 34, line 214 was 131, line 221 was 3,934, line 232 was 10,809, and line 261 was 256. And all of those amounts are being posted to the contracted services line.
Okay.
Thank you, Dan. So I'll need a motion that Scott just read. Did you get his motion, Denise?
No, I don't get it. But this is.
We'll, we'll provide the sheet, you know, as part of the minutes, so.
Okay. Go ahead, Ellen.
I move to approve the transfers, GBT four, five, and six as presented.
Okay.
And that is for contracted services.
All right, thank you, Ellen. That's good. Do I have a second, Shane? Any other discussion before I do roll call? Okay, seeing none. Rheta?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. Motion passed. All right, is that, that's it, right?
That's it.
For, thank you so much. So school staffing.
So just a couple of notifications for the board's information. Two long-term subs, one Karen Noterman, who will be at Glen Lake, and one for Jennifer Bover, who will be at the high school. For your approval, we have a resignation from student support specialist, supporting our strings program, from Rebecca Carl.
Do we want to do, do a motion to accept that one first? So let's have a motion to accept that resignation. No, go ahead, Shane.
I'll make a motion to accept the resignation for Ben Carl.
All right, thank you. Do I have a second? By Ginny, any discussion before I do roll call? All right. Rheta?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Shane?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
And Heather, yes. Thank you. Go ahead.
Kate has on the sheet here next, support staff leave of absence for the remainder of the year for Rebecca Branscombe from Glen Lake.
Okay. That's the remainder of the school year, right?
Remainder of the school year.
Okay. All right, so I'll need a motion to accept by Ellen. Do I have a second? By Shane, any discussion? Okay. Rheta?
That's okay, I see that individual in the next section as well, so is this just a transfer for that individual?
Yeah.
But we have to keep them separate?
Right, have to keep them separate.
Thanks, Jared. All right, so I'm going to do-
I think one of the things, if I may-
Go ahead, Dan.
Is you want to keep the other position open, so she can go back to it if this position doesn't go longer than a year.
Exactly.
Thank you, Dan. All right, so I'm going to do roll call.
Yes.
Rheta? Ginny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Shane?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
And Heather, yes, motion passed.
Okay, continuing on, we have teacher nominations, Rebecca Branscombe, who you just approved the one-year leave of absence. Kathleen Non going into a Title I position that we have funds for this year. Megan Briggs, one-year position at Maple Ave, and Ann Kelly, new art teacher here at the high school.
All right, so I'll need a motion to accept these nominations. Oh, did you have a question?
Yeah.
Sorry, Ellen.
We see that Rebecca's going from a paraprofessional at Glen Lake to a preschool teacher. Does she have a change in credentials for that, for that change in position?
I think she already had the credentials.
She already had them, okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you, Ginny, so Ellen made the motion to accept the nominations, do I have a second? By Shane, any further discussion? Okay, Rheta?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Shane?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
And Heather, yes, motion passed, so now we have co-curricular.
Yeah, for co-curricular nominations, we have two individuals that are splitting the strength and conditioning position, so instead of it being one person, it's now going to be two. One who had previously been in the role, which was Joe Patista, and the other, Mr. Deverant, Josh Deverant, who will be doing about a third of that role.
All right, so I'll need a motion by Ellen, do I have a second? By Ginny, any discussion? Rheta?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Shane?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
And Heather, yes, motion passed, so there's other?
Yeah, so the two other things that I wanted to bring to the board tonight, asking for your consideration, two new positions that we have, two vacancies that I'm recommending. The first would be to take a current existing high school vacancy that we have not been able to fill, and to create a one-year 504 support position. We have 106 students who have 504 plans here at Goffstown High School, and Mrs. Lewis has been seeking to have additional supports, additional layers of services available for those students. So we're recommending this as a one-year, I would say, take this in the same package of thinking about some of the other support services that we put in place as a result of COVID. So as a one-year position, we would like to increase the 504 supports here at the high school. And the second one is, we have an elementary position that we have not been able to fill for an instructional coach, this was something that the board may recall, I had talked about last spring, and with all the many, many things that we've been working on, we didn't have a staff member who was interested, applied for the position, so we haven't had a lot of interest. I think people maybe don't understand what it is, which is fine, but given that we're not filling that position, I'd like to hire another nurse for the rest of this school year. So what I would do with this nurse is I would have a built-in buffer for coverage, so if I have a nurse that's out, I would have an automatic substitute built in, and then I would have a schedule that the nurse would rotate between the buildings. So the nice thing would be, it would potentially free up the existing nurse in the school to work on paperwork, it could be any other projects, certainly all things COVID has taken an awful lot of time, so we thought it would be prudent this year, and again, I would have brought this to you in the spring. I didn't anticipate that we would probably be finding ourselves in circumstances that we felt that we needed additional nursing supports this year. We had all really hoped that COVID was going to be in the rearview mirror, and we were moving forward, but very clearly, that's not the position, so this is an existing, these are vacant positions, and I would look at these as one-year temporary positions to provide additional supports.
Go ahead, Jared.
Because these are additional supports, that you're kind of marketing these as, what's the thought of using ESER funds for this? I would imagine, especially a floating nurse, that that would be a remediation effort for COVID.
I would argue both of these would be eligible, Jared. I think it becomes a question of tactics, so if you wanted to do that, we could do that, but that, these are two vacant positions that we have in the general fund right now. If we were to use ESER, that means that's less money available for a window project, an HVAC project, et cetera. So it would be a function of preference for the board.
So the money for the positions would cover the nurse?
Correct.
And the increased 504 support?
And right now, those, these positions, again, when we talk about the unassigned fund balance that we'll have on June 30th of 2022, right now, these are vacant positions that are contributing to that.
Oh, I see two hands, go ahead, Ginny.
What is the high school position that we're unable to fill?
Science.
And are we filling it some other way, or?
So some of them, we've been able to consolidate some sections, we've been able to add. I think the board knows, science and math positions have been incredibly challenging for us to fill. And again, these are one-year, this is not anything that I would recommend continuing, continuing beyond.
Go ahead, Janelle.
Can you tell me, if I refresh my memory, about the instructional coach job, what was that?
So this was a position that we had wanted to create to do things like supporting teachers, working with some of our core programs, some of the new things like iXL. We're implementing the new student management system, the learning management system for next school year. Really, so to provide more of a peer-to-peer support to teachers, so think about, you know, an expert teacher, high-end, highly skilled teacher, to be able to go in and provide boots-on-the-ground, hands-on support for our teachers. As opposed to, it's an administrator, it's evaluative, you're gonna, this is going to be part of your record, that this is more support, coaching, and growth from peer-to-peer. And this is something that I've wanted to do for years, we've kind of never been able to get the position and make it happen, so we finally were able to do that, but we didn't have the interest in filling it. This, this position will be one of our teachers. I would not foresee hiring from the outside, because you need somebody that is, you know, tested, tried and true, and with someone who's a, you know, one of our really expert-level teachers, we've got a lot of people who'd be great in this role. And again, this is something that I want to, I will bring back to you next spring, because I want to staff this, but for this one year, I think it makes sense to pick up another nurse. If, if we're able to.
Right.
So I think school nursing, we might get lucky, because I think there are a lot of people that would rather work in a school setting than a, you know, hospital-type setting, so hopefully, hopefully we'll be able to staff this.
Any other questions for Brian? Ellen, do you?
We're funding this with budget, or budget?
Correct.
Budget.
With vacancies.
With the vacancies that we have, and then we're somehow filling those vacancies in other creative ways, let's say. So these dollars would remain within the default budget?
Correct. The positions would remain.
Yes.
And then we would, we would seek to staff those for next school year.
Any other questions? We're going to need a motion to move this forward.
I would to approve the, let's see, proposal, repurposing position one year, and the elementary coach one year, for the nurse.
All right, thank you, Ellen, do I have a second?
Second.
By Shane, any other discussion before I do roll call? All right, seeing none, Rheta?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Janelle? Dan?
Yes.
Shane?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
And Heather, yes, motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
All right, so any other business that may legally come before the meeting? All right, seeing none, our next board meeting is October 4th. We do have one non-public, so, right, just K?
Just K.
So I'll need a motion to go into non-public session RSA 91-A, semicolon, 32K, which is consideration by a school board of entering into a student or pupil tuition contract authorized by RSA 194 or RSA 195-A.
So moved.
Thank you, Jared. And that was Janelle's second. All right, I'll do roll call, Rheta?
Yes.
Ginny?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Janelle?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Shane?
Yes.
Ellen?
Yes.
Terry?
Yes.
And Heather, yes, so we are in non-public, but we're going to take a five minutes.
Yeah, actually, I was just talking to-